Third month, eighteenth day of two thousand thirteen. Roll call. Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conken.
Present.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Bedling.
Present.
Alderman Newsom.
Present.
Alderman Tempest.
You see that?
Alderman May.
Present.
Alderman Valco.
Present.
I entertain a motion to seat a chairman pro tem.
I'll make the motion to seat Alderman Bedling as chairman pro tem.
Second. Motion made in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Harold, you're up.
Yeah, it was yours.
Mayor Pro Tempore. Is that right, my good Italian friend?
Dave, can you get Alderman Tempest, please?
Hilarious. Motion to seat Alderman Tempest.
Second. Okay, Harold, you're up.
Everyone, please rise for a moment in silence. To me, perhaps, let's reflect on our country returning to political and fiscal sanity. It'd be a good thing to think about. Thank you. Thank you. I'll pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we go to audience time? First speaker is Violet Ricker. Three-minute time limit, please.
Well, do you want me to talk slower or do I have a three-minute time limit? Okay. My name is Violet Ricker. I live at two oh three Water Street, and I'm also the director of Waukegan Main Street, our downtown development nonprofit organization. I want to thank everybody who came out to Art Walk this weekend. We had a great crowd, and we celebrated the second anniversary of three downtown businesses: of Dinosaur Studio, of Dandelion Gallery, and of Big Ed's. And so, I really want to thank everybody who came out and for the city, for all their hard work in recruiting people, and the fun celebration of dyeing the river green. And I also want to encourage everybody to check out our website over the next couple of days. We're very fortunate to be partnering with NAACP of Lake County and Latino Coalition of Lake County to sponsor a Waukegan mayoral candidates forum. And so, that'll be happening the first week of April, and we encourage you to check out waukeganmainstreet.org for more information about that or call our office at eight four seven six two three six six five zero, and we'll give you more information about that soon. Thanks very much.
The next is Bro Blanks. Please state your name and address, please. Three-minute time limit.
Hello, Blanks. Four oh nine Oak Street, Waukegan. You know, some of the citizens in the first ward often ask me, you know, why do I come down to the city council and not go so hard on this issue of hypocrisy? And as some of you know, and as I often say, you know, I'm not really here from here, meaning Lake County. You know, I grew up and come up in humble beginnings in the city of Laurel, Mississippi. And I, you know, growing up as a shorty in the South in the sixties, you know, I learned that hypocrisy is the main vein and root of inequality. And in other words, you know, I can drink from this water fountain, but you can't. I can sit in the back of the, or I'm gonna sit in the front of the bus, but you keep it moving to the back. Let's bring it a little bit closer here to northern Mississippi of Lake County. Some of the things that have transpired is like, I can drive around, or I should say, I can, under the $500 empowerment, my political cronies, their families and friends can get their car out while the city and the citizens have to pay the full extent of that $500 empowerment and be prosecuted to the fullest extent of the law. And if you come down to protest your First Amendment right about it, you're gonna be charged a full fee of the five, the full fee of the parade ordinance while friends who are favorable towards issues of the city is, while friends who are favorable of the city, you know, they, they don't have to pay anything. But even, and the reason why I continue to harp on this, you know, many citizens, let's even come here, you know, let's say even with, even low, I mean closely, I'm the city clerk. I can drive around with no front lights in place, and I'm sitting here with two packages where citizens have been charged $120 tickets in the toughest economy of this city. And they have to pay those tickets, or young people can come in, or if I'm the mayor, I can applaud, you know, those who have favorable things of what I have to do as a mayor, they can applaud. But if somebody's coming down here to address issues on behalf of the citizens, people are limited to applause. Even right here today, it's hypocritical when you say that you're going to award contracts and look out for your citizens here in this city and make sure they're working, but the only difference between holding that accountable is $800 over citizens who need work here in your city? It's hypocrisy when you form a ordinance saying you're gonna look out for the citizens of the city. Let me, let me take this down a minute, 'cause you got a lot of people who work in, who live here in this city, who are construction workers in this city, who would rather be working and would be appalled that you would allow an $800 difference to keep citizens of your city from being employed. That is hypocritical.
Fifteen seconds.
Thank you. So I just want to say, I hope that whoever is re-elected or elected, that you're gonna do more of a genuine effort to eradicate the hypocrisy that is going on here in this city and in this council for the best interest of the citizens and quit, and make sure they are accountable. Thank you.
No applause, please. No, you can't. We'll move on to committee reports. Oh, minutes. Sorry, minutes. Motion to approve the minutes.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Alderman Rivera, second by Alderman Cunningham. Motion by Alderman Valco, second by Alderman Cunningham. All in favor?
Aye.
Nay? Opposed? Passes. Under resolutions and proclamations, we have an award presented to David Motley from the Illinois Alliance for Arts Education, acknowledging him for his achievements.
David, you wanna come up and speak on that?
He's a humble man.
Yeah, it's not here.
I wondered why you guys sent me the preliminary agenda, not the final agenda, 'cause I didn't know that you'd be calling on me for this. But I humbly accepted an award from the Illinois Arts Alliance for Arts Education for public and community service last week at the governor's mansion in Springfield, along with special recognition from the State of Illinois Ninety-Eighth General Assembly, sponsored by Rita Mayfield, signed by Michael Madigan, and the clerk of the house, Timothy Mapes, for arts commitment and involvement in making sure that arts are a priority in Waukegan. So, again, I say I humbly accepted the accolades. I just wanted to recognize the people that were major players and partners in allowing this to become a priority, and those are Emily Deek Correa from Dandelion Gallery, her partner Michelle Patch, Mark Hoffman from Dinosaur Studio, I wanted to recognize Brendan Elviani from Joplin's Java, Will Gardner from Water Street Gallery, Stuart Stephanie, who is a professor of art at Lake Forest College, local crazy man Jeff Creath, and of course Violet from Waukegan Main Street. And while there are still accolades to be out there, I wanted to recognize Kent Moon, property owner downtown Waukegan, and also George Torres, property owner downtown Waukegan, for having a cooperative vision and allowing us to use their spaces at no charge as an incubator style that helped stir this art movement two years ago. So again, well timed. I am appreciative of the accolades, but certainly, it's not an indication of any accomplishment yet because there's still a lot to do. So, thank you so much for your time.
Congratulations.
You're right. I'd like to make a motion that we take the committee reports out of order that is on the agenda with Public Works Committee report first, followed by Public Safety Committee, and last, the Finance Committee.
I'll second that.
A motion by Alderman Newsom, seconded by Alderman May.
All those in favor?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Excuse me, chairman? Is the, do we still have the presentation by the Waukegan Public Library?
They're not, they're not coming.
Okay.
Thank you.
Public Works is up now?
Since I was not at the committee report, Alderman May, would you mind taking this for me?
No, that's fine.
Thank you.
One second. The Public Works Committee met this evening, March eighteenth, at six fifteen P.M. The first item is to solicit competitive quotes for national, natural gas usage for the water plant, including the water plant and the three water booster stations, and I so move. And this is a permission to solicit quotes.
I have a motion by Alderman May, seconded by Alderman Tempest. Any comments?
Yep.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
The next item is to request permission to purchase two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen salt from state's central management contract. The Public Works Committee recommends that the city council authorize the proper city officials permission to participate with the state's central management services for the procurement of our road salt for the next fiscal year, and I so move.
I have a motion by Alderman May, seconded by Alderman Moiseo.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Bedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham. Alderman Cunningham. I'm sorry.
And our last item is to request permission to draft specifications and advertise for bids to replace two PCB treatment cells. Public Works Committee recommends that the city council authorize the proper city officials permission to have Rivers Bend Engineering of Stewartevent, Wisconsin to draft specification and advertise for bids for the replacement of two PCB treatment cells, and this is on the OMC property, and I so move.
I have a motion by Alderman May, seconded by Alderman Conken. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
That concludes the Public Works report.
Thank you, Alderman May.
Thank you, Alderman May, for sitting in.
No problem.
Alderman Conken.
Thank you. Public Safety Committee met tonight at six thirty. We ran a little bit long. We only had one item to talk about and one for discussion. First item, item A is the Public Safety Committee recommends that the proper city officials be authorized to award a contract to Builders Land, twenty thirty-five South Arlington Heights Road, number one oh one A, Arlington Heights, Illinois six zero 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 five, for the construction phase of the police department's capital improvement project. Police Department renovations for an amount not to exceed seventy-seven thousand two hundred and ninety dollars. Funds for this project will be taken from the capital improvement bonds fund, general obligation bond, Series C, account number three zero seven dash one three zero seven dash two six three nine two. I so move.
I have a motion by Alderman Conken, seconded by Alderman Newsom.
Yes.
Clerk, would you please call the roll first?
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman.
Sorry, sorry.
Before we move on with that, I want something for the record, and Dan, I hope you get some of this. You know, tonight, we had some extensive conversation on not just the police department, but an issue that has been very, I think, dear to me as a citizen and as a legislator. You know, we are awarding a bid that has a difference of eight hundred and some dollars that could go to Waukegan Company. I know some may think that's nothing, that some of that little, a low price doesn't mean anything. But what I think this does is sends a huge message to those outside our community who come in here, take these bids, and they are not held accountable for making sure that our economy comes first and foremost. I had an opportunity to be a candidate for mayor, and one of the things I talked about is making sure Waukegan's first. Now, that means different to other people than what it means to me. Eight hundred dollars should even, shouldn't even be a, we shouldn't even entertain the thought of where these dollars are going to be spent. It takes a company just to register to be in the city of Waukegan, close to two or three hundred dollars. They buying their gas in the city of Waukegan, and then now they have an opportunity to bid, and they bid, and you tell them they can't get the bid for an $800 difference when it costs their operations well over a thousand dollars per year, if not more than that? Business one-on-one, that doesn't make sense to me. Then we talk about responsible bidders, low-qualified bidders. Who should? We're gonna get sued. I'm not afraid of that getting sued anymore. I'm not afraid of sticking up for Waukegan anymore. Seventy-seven dollars is, seventy-seven thousand dollars, I think in the contract world's not a lot of money compared to what those big numbers are. But I want to take us back. Alderman Tempest talks about history. This was part of one of my first big projects as a city alderman. A garage was built. There was a concept to bring this garage where minorities would get some, Waukegan would get some. Everybody was part of that pie. We scrapped that idea because of a Waukegan company called Pickus. I joined that bandwagon because it was Waukegan. Here today, ten to fifteen years later, we say the opposite. Let's not do it because it's Waukegan. Let's do it because it's the responsible way. They're not gonna come to Waukegan anymore. As long as there's bids that are out there, people gonna bid on them. Make no mistake about that. But it is our responsibility up here to look out for the citizens in the city of Waukegan for eight hundred and fifty-two dollars. I cannot believe we thinking about it. There should be a message already sent. You're gonna hire from us. If there's something close to us, it's gonna come to us, so we can protect and invest in us. I'm totally disappointed in how this has even thought of, but what really kills me, and I'm not trying to get on the bandwagon, but I gotta say this. Department heads, you should be the first one sticking up for Waukegan. You should tell them in the, listen, this is what the council is gonna be looking for. This is the idea, this is the concept we're coming from. If you don't sell it, how can we? Eight hundred and fifty-two dollars? No. Can't do it. This is not a specialty item. Heck, we got people in Public Works can really do this job, if you wanna, if you wanna really think about it. We got some of the most skilled individuals that work in Public Works can do this less than this probably. I'm just saying, think of us first. And if you want to talk business, it is business sense to invest in our city first and foremost before we invest in somebody else. That's my opinion. I don't know what it means to anyone else. I only can tell you what it means to me, and this is what I'm gonna be doing for the rest of my career as an alderman and as a leader on council floor. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Alderman Tempest.
Thank you for your, thank you for your comments, Alderman. I want to think about Stuckey Construction, because they worked for the city before. A lot of you, Alderman, are aware of that. If the fire chief could tell you, they helped remodel some of the fire stations and did an excellent job. Real good craftsmanship. Local company came back, no charge, once or twice, to help some other items, because they were glad to work for the city of Waukegan. Now we have a bid within one percent profit, one percent, and we know the workmanship that Stuckey can give. We know he has local employees. Guys, we had some people on the election board. We had to have an election board with two attorneys from across the street to come sit in with a nonsense charge that the lady didn't have it notarized, and he didn't, she didn't sign her signature. It just had initials, and we had a two-day hearing over that nonsense that should have never been brought, but the lawyers got paid more than eight hundred dollars for their two, for their two times. A lot more than that. You know, I am conservative, yes, but I know Stuckey will make up that eight hundred dollars when it comes to some extras or some little items that you haven't looked at. So therefore, I feel we should vote for Stuckey Construction, a local contractor right here within one percent, and he's proven his workmanship before. I mean, it's eight hundred dollars on seventy-seven thousand? Yes, eight hundred dollars is a lot of money. I almost willing to give you the darn money out of my pocket to keep a local guy working. I've said enough.
Alderman Rivera.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, when I read this a couple days ago, looked at the materials, looked at the numbers, and I saw the difference, and I'm saying to myself, you know, here we have a Waukegan company who's qualified, who's responsible, you know, to do the job. Now, eight hundred and fifty-two dollars, that, that, you know where that can be made, made up? By the workers frequently in our restaurants, and like Alderman Tempest was saying, if they need parts or whatever, guess what? Where are they gonna, where are they gonna go? They're gonna go to the local drug, excuse me, the parts stores, or wherever they need their, their, their parts for the job. They're gonna spend the money here. That's gonna make the difference. You know, plus, it's gonna bring jobs to our community. You know, so, you know, sometimes, you know, we do have to, you know, look up outside the box when it comes to these bids, you know? It just doesn't necessarily mean, you know, it's, it's the lowest, because, you know, there is gonna be change orders, or, there's gonna be change orders, no question about it. But in my opinion, Stuckey is from the city of Waukegan. I think that's, if you want to look out for the best interest of the city of Waukegan, it's hiring the local bidder from the city of Waukegan, in my opinion. So, that's all I have to say.
Have a question.
Alderman May.
So if, if the motion is amended to change the contractor, can we also change on the floor the item in Finance Committee so that we're not holding up the, the progress of this project? Okay. Thank you.
Alderman Conken.
This bid, Deputy Chief McCormick has mentioned earlier today, we are on time, so we can amend this to change the company if the council so desires, but it is on a, there's a time restraint with this. The money has to be spent, or else it will go back into the general, or we'll lose it, actually, I believe. So this money does have to be spent, and this project has to be approved before the, and the check has to be cut before the end of next month. So I just want to make everybody aware of that, and that's all. Thank you.
I recognize myself. Our word is our bond. We advertise low bidder, yet we're gonna change the rules when it doesn't suit us. Who's gonna want, we already have a reputation, most people have heard it, that it's difficult to do business in Waukegan. Well, this is one of the reasons. Low bidder is just low bidder. You advertise for low bidder, you have to keep your word. Who's gonna want to waste their time bidding on any jobs in Waukegan, knowing that, well, Bowler, Stuckey, or whoever else is bidding on it, if they're close, they're not gonna get the job anyway? That kind of lessens competition, increases prices. We have, Stuckey and Bowler both are doing a number of projects here in, for the school district. I think I'll take a trip around tomorrow, and I'm gonna look at some city stickers of the cars parked on those projects and find out where their employees actually live. We're speculating that they have Waukegan employees. I don't know that. I don't know who, I don't know who works for Builders Land. But, local hiring ordinance, once again. You work for Stuckey or Bowler, another community has that? Okay, they might have to lay you off because you don't live in that community. It's a zero-sum game. Why does government have to get involved in private business? It seems our country is on the verge of bankruptcy today. Our state, most especially, is on the verge of bankruptcy. The free market must rule. I don't think we should be involved in, in, in changing. We asked for the low-qualified bidder. That's what we got, and if we don't stick with it, I don't know what's gonna happen, but I don't think it's gonna be good. We've seen how it already has worked out in this community. Change orders, cost overruns. I don't think there's gonna be any change orders on this project unless those are approved by the council. Extra expenditure of money. Am I, am I right or wrong about that? So that's kind of out. The contractor has to have a performance bond if they go bankrupt. I believe there's an insurance company that covers the cost to finish the project. That's the way it works. Our word is our bond. Do we want to be a city that people want to do business in? Or a closed, communistic sort of society? I'm done.
Call the question.
Alderman Valco.
Last time. A few people in the audience, I apologize. This thing's been getting beat up tonight to a, to a tune of a dead horse. But this is very dear to me also, and you can see that it's very dear to Alderman Cunningham also. When I first received this in the mail, it was dated March fifteenth, and was from the police department, and it says, "The police department requests permission to award a contract to Builders Land Incorporated of Arlington Heights," I'm skipping here, "to begin the demolition and the construction of the police department's renovation of the former city hall." Builders Land Incorporated was the low-qualified bidder for all phases of the project. Our architect and construction consultant, RRP, has recommended that Builders Land Incorporated receive the award to perform the work. The project is to be funded, and I won't bore you with this, because it's all general obligation bonds, but it totals one hundred and seventy-two thousand two hundred and forty-two dollars. Now, there was only seventy-seven thousand dollars left in the obligation bonds. So, it goes on to say, "The total amount of the bond funds remaining for this project are not enough to fund the work necessary to complete the entire project that was bid on, base proposal A, base proposal B, and alternate three. Therefore, the police department requests authorization to complete base proposal B and alternate three on the attachment as that amount of base proposal A that can be achieved using the remaining funds." So the way I read it, RRP, our consultants, said that Builders Land Incorporated was the best low-qualified bidder for the entire project, but somewhere along the line, we dropped from one hundred and seventy-two thousand to seventy-seven thousand dollars, and the bid, so we don't get all confused here, is around fifty-three thousand, and it's like eight hundred and fifty-two dollars difference. So, I'm looking at it as RRP said, for the entire project, Builders Land Incorporated was probably the most qualified bidder, but somewhere along the line, it became split. So that's where, so everybody should be aware of that, okay? That's all I have, sir. Can I, can I ask this, though?
Alderman Rivera.
Was this, when it's split, did Stuckey have the opportunity? Were they notified of this split? You know, that's, that's my question.
Yes, they have a bid in, the bid, their bid is in there with the split also.
No, I know, but that was for the overall. Was there?
No, that, that split, their split is eight hundred and fifty-two dollars more than the land, if you check the numbers. So they are aware of the, they were, they did bid on the project A, the project B, the alternates also in there. So yes, they are aware, and they, they put in their bid, and like I said, that's what we're discussing right here, is the eight hundred and fifty-two dollar difference.
Okay, I'm just referring to the letter that was from, you know, the Deputy Chief.
begin the demolition and the construction of the Police Department's renovation of the former City Hall. Builders Land Incorporated was the low-qualified bidder for all phases of the project. Our architect and construction consultant, RRP, has recommended that Builders Land Incorporated receive the award to perform the work. The project is to be funded," and I won't bore you with this because it's all general obligation bonds, "but it totals one hundred and seventy-two thousand, two hundred and forty-two dollars." Now, there was only seventy-seven thousand dollars left in the obligation bonds. So, it goes on to say, "The total amount of the bond funds remaining for this project are not enough to fund the work necessary to complete the entire project that was bid on, Base Proposal A, Base Proposal B, and Alternate Three. Therefore, the Police Department requests authorization to complete Base Proposal B and Alternate Three on the attachment as that amount of Base Proposal A that can be achieved using the remaining funds." So the way I read it, RRP, our consultants, said that Builders Land Incorporated was the best low-qualified bidder for the entire project, but somewhere along the line, we dropped from one hundred and seventy-two thousand to seventy-seven thousand dollars, and the, the bid, so we don't get all confused here, is around fifty-three thousand, it's like eight hundred and fifty-two dollars difference. So, I'm looking at it as RRP said, for the entire project, Builders Land Incorporated was probably the most qualified bidder, but somewhere along the line, it became split. So, that's where, so everybody should be aware of that, okay? That's all I have, sir.
Can I, can I ask this, though?
Alderman Rivera.
Was this, when it's split, did, uh, Stuckey have the opportunity? Were, were they notified of this split? You know, that's, that's my question.
Yes, they have a bid in, the bid, their bid is in there with the split also.
No, I know, but that was for the overall, was there?
No, that, that split, their split is eight hundred and fifty-two dollars more than the land, if you check the numbers. So they are aware of the, they were, they did bid on the Project A, the Project B, the alternates also in there. So yes, they are aware, and they, they put in their bid, and like I said, that's what we're discussing right here, is the eight hundred and fifty-two dollar difference.
Okay, I'm, I'm just referring to the letter that was, uh, from, uh, you know, the Deputy Chief, that's what I'm referring to.
I recognize my, I recognize myself once more. I urge my colleagues to do the right thing here. We advertised for low bid, that's what we got. Period.
Call the question.
Are you ready, Harold?
Yeah.
Alderman Rivera.
Will you read the motion again, please?
Yeah. Motion is, "The Public Safety Committee recommends, and I so move, that the proper city officials be authorized to award a contract to Builders Land, twenty thirty-five South Arlington Heights Road, number one oh one A, Arlington Heights, Illinois six zero 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 five, for the construction phase of the Police Department's capital improvement project, Police Department renovations, for an amount not to exceed seventy-seven thousand, two hundred and ninety dollars. Funds for this project will be taken from capital improvement bond funds, general obligation bond, Series C, account number three zero seven dash one three zero seven dash two six three nine two. And I so move."
I have a motion by Alderman Conkin, seconded by?
Newsom.
Alderman Newsom.
Alderman Rivera.
I vote no.
Alderman Cunningham.
Uh, I vote no, and I will say this, we're sending the wrong message. Tonight, we have an opportunity to send a message that you will look, look out for this city first and foremost. My vote is no, it is a resounding loud no. Thank you.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseau.
No.
Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
No.
Aye.
Aye. Alderman Tempest.
No.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
No.
Failed. Failed.
The motion failed.
What'd you expect?
I make, I moved to make, uh, a motion to amend. I move that Stuckey Construction.
It's over.
No, it's not.
Yeah.
No, it's not, you can, no, it's not.
We amended it.
It's over.
Make a new motion.
Make a new motion.
Make a new motion.
You can make a new, that's what I'm saying, we can make a new motion. You can make a new motion.
It's not on the agenda.
It's not on the agenda, we can't.
We made a new motion in committee.
Okay, so we'll move on to Finance Committee, uh?
No, we'll finish here now. I'd like to.
We'll finish here now, we'll be here all night. We, we have a business before us, it's been the committee.
Yeah, you can make, you can make a new motion.
If fail the committee, committee recommended, it needs to be done. Now, you have a choice, if you don't get it passed, they'll get nothing. They'll get nothing. The money you don't have will go back to the, to the bond. So if you want the project to move forward, I think there's enough votes here this evening to afford it with eight hundred and fifty-two dollars, you know, I'll donate four hundred dollars toward the damn thing to keep local people working, and you can put that in the Local, for that kinda money, less than one percent, yes, we have some reasons we'd vote the way we did, and I respect those, but I also respect the fire department, I don't know why they waited till the last minute. I mean, the Police Department, excuse me, Chief Young, why they waited till the last minute to get this done, I don't know. But they do need, they knew, they do need some improvements.
Things seem to be out of order here. We voted no on it.
Can I? Well, I, I'd like to make a motion, I seem to have the floor right now, I'd like to mo, make the motion that we awarded to Stuckey Construction Company.
They didn't give you the floor, though.
We, I'll make an emotion, I'll get a second, if you wanna have a battle, we have a battle.
I'm not here to have a battle, we voted no on it.
Well, thank you. We're talking about getting the work done, and I'm making a motion that we award.
You wanna talk, we advertised for low bidder.
To Stuckey Construction.
Now we're gonna turn our back on it.
I, I make an emotion.
Gentlemen, Coach, can I, can I say something?
For Stuckey Construction.
I have the Corporation Council.
I ask you to make a ruling on the floor for the Corporation Council, please.
At this point, under our ordinances, uh, when a motion, this is section two dash seventy-four, when a motion has been carried in the affirmative or negative, it shall be voted on, a, someone who voted on the prevailing side may make a motion that it be reconsidered.
Yes.
Which would put it back on the floor in this meeting or a succeeding meeting. So at this point, we've had a motion, it wasn't amended before it was voted upon, and it failed. So if someone who voted against the motion, on the prevailing side of that, of that, of that vote, were, in light of the council's sentiments, to make a motion to reconsider, it would then come back before the council this evening.
And I'm on the prevailing side?
Yes.
And I'd like to make a motion.
You have to change your vote, right?
No, no, he's on the prevailing side.
We have to make the motion to reconsider and then amend the motion. Any member who voted on the prevailing side according to the ordinance can make the motion to reconsider.
Yes.
Anybody that voted no, do the motion.
I'd like to make a motion that we reconsider the previous vote on Bowler Construction Company, that we reconsider that motion that was just.
No, no, I, I think Alderman, what you'd ask is that the motion be reconsidered, and then we need to vote on that first, and then that puts the subject matter back.
Back on the floor.
And then we can amend it as the council says fit.
So move.
And I second it.
The motion by Alderman Tempest, seconded by Alderman Rivera.
To reconsider.
To reconsider.
Okay, Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
We'll reconsider.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseau.
Aye.
Alderman Beedling.
No.
Alderman Newsom.
No.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Okay.
Now, a new motion may be made in the same session.
I'd like to make a motion that we, uh, award.
Amend.
Amend the previous motion to award Stuckey Construction Company to do the work at this police station for, what was the total there?
Seventy-seven.
So move.
Any amount not to exceed seventy-seven thousand.
Not, not to exceed seventy-seven thousand dollars.
Two ninety.
Two ninety.
Seven-seven thousand, two hundred and ninety.
Thank you.
I have a motion by Alderman Tempest, seconded by?
Second.
Alderman Cunningham. Clerk, would you call?
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseau.
Aye.
Alderman Beedling.
No.
Alderman Newsom.
No.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
The motion carries. We'll move to Finance Committee.
Don't we have to vote on the amended motion? That was just to amend.
Just to amend, now we have to vote on the motion.
The amended motion?
Yes. Yeah, yeah, you have to have the motion.
The motion again.
Now, we'll vote on the motion itself, just to amend. We have to call a question.
We have to get, we have to get a motion and second.
We have to have a motion.
Motion and second.
And second, to pass the motion as amended.
Make the motion somewhat.
So move.
I'll make the motion.
You want me to read it?
Who's, who's got?
You had the motion.
We need, we need, we need, we now need a motion to pass the motion as amended.
So move.
So move. So move, yeah.
The motion by who?
Motion by Alderman Cunningham, seconded by Alderman Tempest.
Alderman Cunningham, seconded by Alderman Tempest.
Roll call, please. Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
No.
Alderman Moiseau.
Aye.
Alderman Beedling.
No.
Alderman Newsom.
No.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Passed.
Motion carries.
Let's get the work done.
The other, other item I had was for discussion only, was, uh, traffic study requested by Main Street for the intersection of Washington and Spring Street, that's coming up from the train station. They request that the Police Department do a study, and they are, will do that, they're gonna be in process to, uh, check the area for pedestrian traffic, make it a little safer. They'll be doing a study and bringing their results to the Public Safety Committee probably next month, and that's all I have, thank you.
Go to Finance Committee, Alderman Newsom.
Finance Committee met this evening at seven eleven P.M. We had one item, um, which has been a deep discussion tonight, and I guess I have to amend, um, what is on the agenda to authorize the use of bond proceeds to fund the award of a contract to Stuckey Construction in the amount not to exceed seventy-seven thousand, two hundred and ninety dollars for the Police Department building improvements, specifically building rehabilitation, coming out of budget code three zero seven, one three zero seven, two six three nine two.
Second.
Alderman, if, if I might, I think that the proper way to do this would be to make the motion as it is in the minutes.
Okay.
Okay, and then once that motion is made, then have, if there's gonna be an amendment, then it would be amended.
Okay, amended afterwards.
At that time, there'd be a motion to amend it, then there'd be a vote in the amendment, and then there'd be vote, assuming the amendment passes, on the amended motion.
Uh, excuse me, couldn't, couldn't we just make a motion to amend it now, before it comes up to?
Well, I, I think you, you can't amend a motion until it's on the table, so we need to get the motion on the table.
All right, thank you.
Okay, we're gonna read it like it was?
Yes.
And I wasn't gonna speak on this, but I think I need to. I know we went out for the low-qualified bidder, and I know I've heard everything that has been said about the eight hundred and fifty-two dollars, but principle is principle. It's not about the money. We had a bid, and we got the bid, and the low-qualified bidder was Builders Land. Now, what's gonna happen? We go out to bid for something else, and the local contractor comes in five hundred dollars lower than the lower, uh, five hundred dollars more than the lowest-qualified bidder. We're gonna turn around and give it to the local bidder again?
Yes.
That's not fair. I don't think it is fair. Why would anybody wanna come and give their honest bid, and then they're gonna get undercut every time they do it if they're not a local contractor? I don't think that's fair, and it's not principle. I've said my piece, now I'm gonna read this. Authorize the use of bond proceeds to fund the award of a contract to Builders Land Incorporated in the amount not to exceed seventy-seven thousand, two hundred and ninety dollars for Police Department building improvements, specifically building rehab, rehabilitation, coming from budget code three zero seven, one three zero seven, two six three nine two, and I so move.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham. I'm sorry. Go ahead, I've changed it to no.
Before we have a roll call, is this, is this motion gonna be amended?
Yes.
Well, then it should be amended before it's voted.
Well, you told me to read it like it is. Okay, doesn't it have to be voted down and then the motion to reconsider?
You can amend it right now.
No, it should be amended right now. If, if it's going to be amended.
It's meant to amend.
Yeah.
Actually.
Someone should, before the vote occurs.
Okay, somebody make a motion to.
We just had to get the motion on the table.
Okay.
Now, if it's gonna be amended, now it's done.
Okay, somebody make a motion to.
Are there any questions or comments? Is it motion to amend?
Go ahead, make it.
Motion and second.
Motion to amend, correct?
Yeah.
Aye.
Motion by Alderman Rivera, seconded by Alderman Cunningham, to amend the emotion, amend the motion to read authorize the use of bond proceeds to fund the award of a contract to Stuckey Construction in the amount not to exceed seventy-seven thousand, two hundred and ninety dollars for Police Department building improvements, specifically building rehabilitation, coming out of budget code three zero seven, one three zero seven, two six three nine two, and I so move. No, I don't so move.
Why don't you just put amendments for what it was?
Yeah, that's the amendment.
It was Rivera and Cunningham.
By Rivera and Cunningham.
He did. Rivera, Rivera and Cunningham.
Call the question to amend.
Call a question to amend.
Alderman Rivera.
That's to amend.
Aye, to amend.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
No.
Alderman Moiseau.
Aye.
Alderman Beedling.
No.
Alderman Newsom.
No.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Okay, that passed.
Now we have to vote on the motion as amended.
I need a motion to.
No, you're voting on the amended.
As amended.
We now need to vote on the motion as amended. So we need to, someone to move and then have it.
You have to say what the amendment is.
I thought it was all.
I just read it.
To change the name.
It was just read.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Okay, need a motion.
Motion by Alderman Tempest, seconded by Alderman Cunningham, on the amended motion. Is there any questions on the motion? No.
Alderman Rivera.
That's, uh, aye.
Wait a minute, I, I had a question.
Oh, I'm sorry, we didn't hear.
Today, it's eight hundred and fifty-two dollars. I asked the Alderman, what dollar figure do you have in your head when you cut it off the low bidder? I'd like to have an answer out of each Alderman here. What dollar figure?
I'd like to call for the question.
I have the floor, Alderman.
I'd like to call for the question.
What dollar figure?
Alderman don't care to respond to your question.
Shame, 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 shame. I'm done.
Alderman Rivera's aye. Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
No.
Alderman Moiseau.
Aye.
Alderman Beedling.
No.
Alderman Newsom.
No.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Passed.
Chairman, may I say something real quick? History lesson, and, uh, Alderman Tempest, she maybe will help me out on this. I don't, we started doing this, and I think after we've now thoroughly confused the audience and the viewing public, and maybe ourselves.
Not me.
We didn't used to, when we voted on something in committee to spend money, it was it. Now everything has to go through Finance Committee.
We never did that.
We never did that before. I don't know, I, I know we've started to do that, I know Tina's not here, I'm not gonna have Joan, we're not gonna belabor this anymore, but I think we've tried to become more efficient as a government, and usually it works out. Excuse me, but we've, this doesn't need to be had to vote on twice, we just wasted twenty minutes of everybody's time.[1636.83]
Vote on it once, in committee, we've always done that, you vote it, and the committee goes to council, it's done. We're voting it ten times to spend money. I understand to, to give the effect that we're more controlled, but really? Come on, that's all, thank you.
Next thing is old business. No old business, reports and communications?
No.
None? New business? Item A, approval of payroll dated March sixth, twenty thirteen, in the amount of one million three hundred and seventy-seven thousand three hundred and forty-two dollars and seventy-one cents. I have a motion by Alderman Newsom, seconded by Alderman Conkin. Clerk, please take your roll.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moizio.
Aye.
Alderman Beadling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May?
Aye.
Alderman Valko?
Aye.
Item B, approval of bills dated March eighteenth, twenty thirteen, in the amount of one million five hundred and ninety-five thousand seven hundred and forty dollars and eighty-seven cents. I have a motion by Alderman Moizio, seconded by Alderman Conkin. Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moizio.
Aye.
Alderman Beadling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May?
Aye.
Alderman Valko?
Item C, Treasurer's Monthly Report for the month of February twenty thirteen.
Motion placed on file.
Received.
Received, received and placed on.
Received report, placed on file.
So move.
Motion by Alderman Conkin, seconded by Alderman Newsom. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item D, presentation by City Treasurer John Schwab.
Mr. Chairman, I have a copy of Lake County News, Newsland, where the treasurer's report of the twenty-eleven, twenty-twelve audit was published, therefore completing that requirement. This completes all requirements of the twenty-eleven, twenty-twelve audit, sir. Ends my report.
Item E, raffle sale application for the Waukegan Rotary Club.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Conkin, seconded by Alderman Moizio. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ordinances and resolutions, item number eleven. A, ordinance adopting new investment policy for the city of Waukegan.
Mr. Chairman?
What is that?
Mr. Chairman?
Wonder where it is?
Go ahead, Doc.
I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't know it was called on. The current investment policy was put into ordinance in nineteen ninety-nine. If this is approved tonight, it will be put on the city's website and sent to all current financial institutions, and to any other that request a copy. Currently, we have three financial institutions that we do banking with. The first, Miss West Bank, North State's Bank, North Shore Savings and Loan. In the interest of transparency, I am on the board of directors of Consumers Credit Union, but the city of Waukegan has no banking relationship with that credit union. I hope it passes tonight.
Mr. Chairman?
What is?
Yes, sir, Alderman Tempest.
The treasurer is asking us to vote for an ordinance today that doesn't, a copy of it hasn't been sent to anybody. Where is it? We don't, I don't vote on things I don't have before me.
Mr. Tempest, I have no idea that, why a copy of that was not, it was listed as being presented as an ordinance, and the, our city attorney was supposed to have that ready, sir.
I have it, I have it, Alderman, I have it.
I have, I have emails to, I have emails to that effect.
You have it? I have it. I'd like to hold that matter over till I get a copy.
So move.
Sure.
Motion by Alderman Tempest, seconded by Alderman Cunningham. Hold it over.
It's held over.
After Alderman time, we're going to have an executive session on settlement of claims and pending litigation, excuse me, Alderman time. You ready to go?
Alderman Rivera. Pass.
Pass.
Alderman Cunningham, pass, Alderman Conkin.
I'd just like to mention one thing, for those that missed it. The Juarez Cup, which was the trophy for the police and fire basketball game, went to the police department. What was amazing, it was in a heck of a game, real exciting. The game was forty-eight minutes long, and the firemen led for forty-seven minutes and fifty-seven seconds. Sergeant Key Zupac hit a three-point shot with three seconds remaining to win it for the fire depart, or for the police department, sixty-four, sixty-three. They gathered some money together for, Chief, special, what's the charity? Booster Club and Special Recreation, wasn't it? Special Recreation, so they raised a lot of money there, and they had a heck of a, a good fundraising effort at halftime. They had free throw shooting for pink-out T-shirts that were left over from the pink-out game that the high school ran. They also had a attempt to make a half-court shot for a hundred bucks. Since nobody made it, that's great for the Booster Club, they kept all the money. That's all I have, thank you.
Alderman, Alderman Moizio.
Pass.
Alderman Beadling.
I only have one thing to say, someone in this city is taking credit for someone else's work, and I think they need to make an adjustment on either their website or their resume. And that's all I'm going to say.
Alderman Newsom. Alderman Tempest. Alderman May?
Thank you, I just have a couple comments. This past weekend marked the second year anniversary of Art Walk. Art Walk is held the third Saturday of every month in downtown Waukegan, and brings a lot of activity to Genesee Street and the surrounding area. Even in cold temperatures, month after month, people come from all over to visit our art galleries, enjoy live entertainment, and patronize our small businesses. I want to congratulate Dinosaur Studio, Big Ed's, and Dandelion Gallery, as this month also marks their second year anniversaries since opening on South Genesee Street. These brave artists took a chance, bet on Waukegan, and are thriving today. Thank you to them for believing in Waukegan and being instrumental in our revival. Which leads me to my next comment. When Art Walk was revived in two thousand and eleven, there was a dedicated resident who led the charge and brought together the team of artists and activists who made Art Walk a reality. This was truly a grassroots effort, and although other community organizations and the city have supported the monthly event, it would not have been possible without the vision and persistence of this original group of people who continue to participate to this day. That dedicated leader is a lifelong resident, as well as an employee of this city, although this endeavor consumed many hours outside of any normal business day. Beyond that, this person volunteers many hours in our schools and supports arts initiatives throughout District Sixty. He also manages the city's gallery, Urban Edge, and has successfully partnered with Deer Path Art League in Lake Forest to bring artists outside of Waukegan into our cultural movement. Most recently, he has been instrumental in bringing together representatives from the National Museum of Mexican Art and the Lyric Opera for Waukegan events. This past week, he was honored in Springfield by the legislature for his efforts related to the arts. He was awarded the Illinois Alliance for Arts Education two thousand and thirteen Public and Community Service Award for his contributions to and support of arts education in Waukegan. As we all know by now, the person that I'm speaking of is David Motley. David, I want to congratulate you on this esteemed award, and thank you for your undying commitment to the arts in Waukegan. You are truly affecting positive change in our city and redefining our image. I thank you, and I'm proud to call you my friend.
Me too. Alderman Valko?
Pass.
Motion goes to executive session. Right now. Motion by Alderman Moizio, seconded by Alderman Rivera. Paul Kramer?
Good. All right.
Yeah, a bad concession in disbursement.
Yes, you do.
Two motions.